Hey, Mike, can you hear me? Uh, the University Heights line is muted, so I can't hear what you guys are saying.
Got it. Sorry about that.
No, you're good. I looked like everybody's looking at the screen, so I was assuming.
If you go ahead and turn your camera on, Ryan, then everybody will be able to see you.
Yeah, I guess I'm just in a hotel room right now, so. Let's see, can I just? Okay. Okay, sorry, I missed that first part, maybe. Uh, what was said? Louise, you just want me to start going through my report then?
Because then you can leave when you're back.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Um, so the first thing I had was, uh, the snow removal contract, and we do have an agenda item for council tonight. Uh, to consider renewing the snow removal contract with, uh, Mark Phelps from Hawkeye Construction, who's done this. Uh, the last several years, um. So, the last few years due to, uh. Supply chain issues and, uh, price volatility, Mark has requested that these contracts be one-year. Contracts instead of two or three-year contracts like we'd had, um, previously, kind of before, um, pandemic time. So this one again, he, uh, he would prefer, he preferred. To do one year and, uh, to do the one-year contract, he was able to keep the unit prices the same as he had, uh, last fall for, for winter of, uh. Twenty twenty-two, so. Um, so we've got the contracts set up, they're pretty much exactly the same as last season. Um, if there's any questions on that, I guess I would. Just go ahead and, uh, see if you'd like to take that vote right now for resolution number twenty-three thirty-six. To allow the mayor to, uh, sign that contract.
Thank you, Ryan. So we have ten iteration of resolution twenty-three. Thirty-six, uh, with the Hawkeye Construction and Snow Removal. Is there a motion?
Oh, wait.
Motion by Doug, is there a second?
I'll say.
Second by Tim. Any discussion, questions? Okay, um. Roll call vote.
Gunn?
Aye.
Moore? Schroder?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, and then I'll, I'll go ahead and run through just, uh, the main bullet points on my report here. So Metronet, I did talk with them last week a little bit. Um, so they've hired a local landscape company to wrap up some of the sodding work, uh, that we've been discussing the last few meetings. Um, so we are familiar, I am familiar with that company that they've said they've hired, so they're planning to do that work in the next week or two here. And this would be, just as a reminder, you know, mostly concentrated to the area that's north of Melrose, um. Uh, George Street cul-de-sac repairs, I've spoken with Lynch Excavating, um, and they, they, they had concerns about. Um, timing of getting that, uh, George Street cul-de-sac work done around football schedule, uh, and. And with the time left this fall before cold weather. So their preference is to, to benefit unit prices to, to wait until the spring, um, of next year, which. You know, is not, and not what I wanted, um, to end up having, happening with this, um, repair with kind of that. Got started with that Metronet damage, but. Um, if that's what's gonna be the best, the best solution at this point in time, then, then I'll keep, continue working through that with them and, and getting a. Contract in place for, for that work. Um, and then Oak Crest Avenue and Mahaska Drive intersection improvements, uh, we're wrapping up punchless items. Uh, I'll, I'll coordinate with the contractor on the last couple items that they need. To get submitted on that, and then I expect by next meeting, we'll have a. A final pay application for that, which would release the retainage, um, for that project. Monroe Street improvements, uh, this is when we talked about that the Mid-American Gas may need to be relocated. That work began last week, right before I left on vacation, so, um, hopefully that's been going smoothly. I did walk through, you know, we received. Plans and reviewed those, um, from Mid-American, uh, gas and then walked through the site and reviewed things with them, uh, a couple different times actually, and. Uh, coordinated with some, some residents on the street, um. You know, to work around some landscaping and, and items like that. Uh, I haven't heard of any issues, uh, so far with that work, but it's supposed to take two to three weeks, so I anticipate. Um, when I'm back in town at the end of this week checking in and, and seeing where they're at, but hopefully by next week, they would be finished with that. So after that's done, uh, we'll have to decide whether we're gonna proceed this yet this year with that. Street project, uh, and, and what the forecast's looking like, and I'll coordinate with, uh, the, the roadway contractor. And their schedule, uh, every, every communication I've had with them is that they're, they're pretty open to, to still starting this year or. Or waiting until next spring to begin that work, so. Payment marking work, so we've got a, uh, payment, uh, including the warrants for eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. Uh, so that is. For everything that was completed, um, there were some areas that we reviewed and there were some areas they didn't complete, so we've, we've adjusted, uh, reviewed all the quantities, um. And, and they are correct, um, from what we're seeing in the field. Um, and this. This, uh, withhold, uh, retainage, so there would be one final payment to issue retainage, uh, at the next meeting, I expect for that work, but otherwise that works complete. And then Gulfview Avenue drainage channel maintenance, so that work happened last week, um. Maybe much to, um, Mike's enjoyment, that the work has, uh, finally gotten underway. And the, the neighboring properties, uh, retaining wall was installed. As well, and then, uh, the work to reshape the channel and install that revetment, uh, stone was, was completed, so. So, we, I didn't have any seating on that work, the, the, the property owner's gonna be having seating done. With kind of as a separate contractor, it's, uh, this works ended up being kind of segmented, so I may coordinate with, uh, Stevens Erosion Control. I believe is who's gonna be doing that seating for the neighbor, to get a couple areas that we filled in that channel, uh, seeded, so it can be a, um. Get some grass growth on that too, so we, we filled a couple areas to straighten out that channel. And avoid future erosion. So that's all I've got on, on my list of report items, but, uh, I didn't know if there's any questions on any of that stuff.
Hey, Ryan, this. This is Mike, I will tell you, I did talk to the crane operator who was moving those giant retaining blocks, and he said that was right at the upper limit of his equipment. And made it very exciting to take them down the hills, so.
Yeah, I imagine, yeah.
I stopped, I stopped to watch after he said that.
Yeah, they've been telling me that they think they were misled at the weight that those, uh, blocks were supposed to be, but. But that's all private, that was all a private property owner.
Right.
Project.
Any other questions for Ryan? Uh, Ryan, you've been very busy. This past few months and really appreciate all your work you've been doing, and, uh, thank you for attending tonight.
Yeah, yeah, no worries, sorry, I had a vacation scheduled for this meeting, but yeah, we're, uh. Uh, having some fun, we're having some fun in Wisconsin and Minnesota this weekend, so, this week, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Thanks. Okay, um, did you want to have add anything, Doug? I know you've been working with Brian on these things.
Yeah, I don't know, I need to do a good thing, you want to think that I want to talk to Ryan about, I just want to do, talk about is. Last year on Sunset, we had some private individuals having their sidewalk on Sunset, uh, cleaned. With a truck and they were driving across the, right away and they were leaving rats a foot deep and, you know, breaking up our plain sidewalk. So I want to make sure that we monitor, get, but also find out whether or not private individuals should be on city regularly.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, we'll go back to Mayor's report. And I have a proclamation regarding park, parking on yards. Uh, due to the Hawkeye Women's Basketball Game on October fifteenth, um, has council had? Time to review that? I'd like an endorsement by, and a vote by council to endorse the proclamation, is there a motion for that?
I'd like the motion.
Motion by Lisa, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steph. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas the Hawkeye Women's Basketball Team posted call. For an exhibition game in Kennick Stadium starting at two P M, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. The crossover at Kennick, and whereas the University Heights City Council desires to welcome fans. And encourage citizens to support and celebrate the crossover at Kennick. And whereas the University Heights City Council desires to establish cer- certain regulations. For tailgating and parking for the crossover at Kennick. Pursue it to the council's authority and jurisdiction to adopt. Regulations for the protection of the health, safety and welfare of the community. Now therefore, I Louise From, Mayor of University Heights Iowa, do hereby proclaim. The following regulation shall be in effect during the crossover at Kennick on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Parking of motor vehicles will be permitted on yards with the permission of the property owner and/or property residents. Parking on streets shall be at the discretion and, uh, direction of the University Heights Chief of Police. Traffic regulations shall be at the discretion and direction of the University Heights Chief of Police to protect the health and safety of residents. Motorists, bicyclists and support teams. Sales of goods, merchandise or services from property within a residential zone. Shall re- shall remain restricted as provided in ordinance number eighty-one, which permits only sales from home occupations. Defined to allow those living at the property to sell items that they prepare on the premises. Signs, banners and flags are permitted to be displayed with the permission of the property owner and/or property residents. These regulations shall be in effect from eight A M to seven P M, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. It's go Hawks, and then it's signed by myself, thank you very much. Um, we'll go on to, uh, the next item. Seven, oh, the fifteen, the fifteen, is that right?
Yes. There's a, there's a typo at the bottom.
It says the twenty.
Oh, like a Gary Laffman, oops, oh, and did, and I read it that way. Thank you. So we'll have to fix the proclamation.
I can do that.
Good catch. So we'll go on to the next two agenda items, a few of the council wanted to have a discussion. And, uh, clarification and review of ordinance and policies requiring developers to reimburse the city. Um, Bobby, would you like to start the discussion?
Yeah, basically. The topic I want to bring up is the idea, should we? So now, basically now that the hotel develops, there's a, you know, and you can even bring this up for others, uh. Developments, I guess, like, would you be if it's applicable, but. Should we continue to charge them for, or bill them for legal services, maybe whatever. They have moving forward if they want to do some sort of building permit. So my, my thinking is. When the development started, University Heights really didn't have any. You know, financial revenue, I guess, to pay for that development process, because in order to get a path, it required zoning ordinance, it required. Um, all the things that needed to happen before the, for council to patch it. Well, now that we're here, they've developed it, it's in its payments revenue. I, my thinking is, just let's make the, uh, building permit process for the hotel, just like it is. For, um, the rest of University Heights, meaning if they want to do something, you want to make a change. To their, their zoning or whatever, uh, or their. Parking lot or whatever the thing, just any availability for them to be just like any other. You know, um. You know, uh, tenant or whatever would in English, does that make sense? So specifically how that works, I think, I don't know what the, um, uh, let me look at the. What's the ordinance? Basically, there's one ordinance that we would delete, um, that would accomplish that.
Oh, yeah.
Order seventy-nine, it's essentially fifteen.
Seventy-nine fourteen D, so. That would require, I said ordinance change, so that would require public hearing, that would require, right?
Um, yeah, yeah. If I refer to public hearing, we refer to three, three reasons, yeah.
Um, so that, that's my proposal to.
Would it be helpful, I know it's Steve wrote in his report to maybe get some history? Um.
There, go ahead.
You know, over the years. Steve, I think that was a good suggestion you put in your report, that you would do that.
True, yeah, so since the time I've been the city attorney, um, all of the developments that, that the, that the city has considered. Uh, so there have been two, two proposed developments in Grandin Court, birthday of court next to us, the University Athletic Club. Back when it was the University Athletic Club, um, the hotel, of course, uh, the property that we're sitting on, um. I think those are most of them. Every time somebody has come to the council or the proposal could really change things, you know, not, not just, you know. Make an addition or something. The city has said, we don't really have a budget for that, we have staff, but, but they work by the hour, they're not solid employees, so we'd like, we can. Reverses the city for fees and expenses, and that's always happened. Um, it's always happened in, in just about the same way. Um, but projects themselves haven't been identical, and so, um. So, for example, with this, this development, the one university place and similar to the hotel. Um, you know, this, they've required a, a zoning change and, uh. There, there wasn't, there was gonna be a, the, what we call the plan here in development, but we didn't have an agreement in place. The council had decided, you know, approve it, and so the developers agreed to reimburse the city for reasonable, uh. Legal expenses, engineering expenses, staff time, publication expenses, kind of the whole, uh, the whole cost of the city. Um, you know, with the understanding that, and, and our, our agreements make it clear, they're kind of, kind of wording. But they made it clear, it's particularly important to me as, or as a licensed lawyer and the, I think, engineers that, you know. You're paying, you're not paying the, your renters and the city for our fees, and I'm not your lawyer, I'm the city's lawyer, that's a, a real important thing for lawyers, make it clear. Um, because, you know, somebody could pay the new, and pay the new, or my guy. So anyway, that's always been, always been clear, uh, once we then got to like an approval stage, so once the zoning was approved. For this property and, and the same, uh, fit of, uh, the hotel property and I think Grandin Court. But that, that one, that particular Grandin Court proposal didn't go forward. Uh, then, um, then we kind of shifted gears and said, okay, now you're gonna, you're gonna be able to build something. And so when you, uh, when you, uh, apply for building permit, uh, you're gonna pay that fee. And that fee is to offset the city's, uh, expenses in considering. The, the, the building, uh, overseeing the building, uh, the building and the nation, the building. And so once there's been that kind of approval, uh, what's happened is. The city said, has the developer entered into a, a separate agreement, similar to the first one. It says you'll reimburse the city for fees and expenses, but you'll get a credit for, uh, you know, uh, amounts that you pay the city. For, uh, building permit, you know, plumbing, electrical, wherever permits there are. And, and so that's what's happened in the past, then, uh, when, when. People have come back, and that hasn't happened a lot, O U P came back with some things, uh, the hotel, obviously, this, this summer came back with different things. And then what the city has said is, well, we're kind of back to square one, you're not gonna be paying a permit fee, so we'd like to reimburse the city for. Fees and expenses, and, and that has happened. And the hotel developers have entered into an agreement with the city this year, didn't they? Um. Particularly to the hotel, that first segment, uh, back in the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen time, and the, um. The hotel, uh, developers reimbursed the city, uh, for expenses and fees, uh, to the extent of. Something a little bit more than sixty-seven thousand dollars. Sixty-seven nine thirty-four, excuse me, sixty-seven nine forty-three, sixty-eight. And so, uh, so everything was squared up, that was, uh, roughly June twenty-eight. And, uh, at that point then, as I said, the hotel developers paid the city. A whole bunch of, uh, fees for permits, and that totaled about ninety-four thousand. Three thirty-six ninety-one. So that, that, that amount was kind of, if you want to say it this way, the credit against which the city would then calculate or. Apply additional ongoing engineering, building official, uh, and legal fees, uh. Which is what happened, um, you know. Truth, strange and fiction kind of stuff, when that all closed down, when the, when the city was coming upon the certificate of life, we can see the issues. We, you know, we're gonna accept the project, that can be done, um, the city's, uh. Additional fees and expenses totaled ninety-two thousand, ninety-eight, twenty-nine. So that was within about thirteen hundred and forty-eight dollars of the amount of permits, so the, the hotel developer. Uh, had overpaid, if you want to look at it that way, uh, they, they don't, they don't, the, the developers don't be paid based upon all the city. Things that's gonna cross the city, anything like that, it's based upon the valuation of the, of the, of the, uh, the project. But it just so happened, it was within thirteen hundred and forty-eight dollars of what the city said, these are the additional fees, you, you, you overpaid a little bit. First contract, it's a, it's a one-way street, they don't get a check back, so, so we were all squared. Um, so that was roughly in a, um. You know, September twenty-twenty-one, uh, and then again into twenty-twenty-two timeframe. And so, again, there wasn't any request for reimbursement, and then that brings us to where we are now. The only other thing I would have mentioned is that somewhere along the line, and, um, and I can find the date, but, uh, didn't. Um, but there was a point where, uh, the council. In twenty eighteen, said, you know, instead of. Asking the developer, uh, when, when they bring a proposal to reimburse the city. And, and I, it could be seen a little awkward, you know, if you're the developer and the city's saying, well, wouldn't you agree to reimburse us for fees? I think it might go like you're, maybe a little pressured to do, and no one ever knows, well, the, the athletic club, but nobody else. Um, but, uh, but there was discussion in that regard, and the council said, let's, let's just. Make this clear from the outset, and that's why the ordinance, that, that's why that forgiveness plea would be the ordinance. So fourteen, section fourteen B of the zoning ordinance, um, it now says, look, if, if you're going to ask. The city to evaluate a development proposal, then first you have to enter into this certain agreement to, to reimburse the shift. So that clarification was made at that time, and that was the reason for it, you know, so the trigger with, with regard to the hotel this year. There were kind of two triggers, um, that led to the city asking for the agreement for green bird speeds and expenses. One is they asked for a zoning agreement, and that's what the zoning board says. Uh, secondly, um, the P U D development agreement had said, you know, you're gonna have to pay fees and expenses. And, and then that's why that agreement was earned, too. That's history, and evidence.
So it wasn't always done for us, I mean, we would. Leave the, you know, give it a deep, you know, give it up, have this in the budget. Put on, that's how we spent after we set it in town, we want to change it. So if we. Change it, then I'm gonna change. For everyone, or just giving them a pass and then someone, someone says. This isn't fair.
Well. Um, like, I mean, as a general mayor, my advice to the council is, you know. We're back for policy that you want to follow, and then follow. It's, it's a lot easier to do that than it is to have policies and disregard them. And one reason to that is, I mean, the council has that thought, you know, the council doesn't have to follow its own rules. It's around risks, uh, when people say, why does, why do people decide to need it, they don't apply to them? Um, you know, but it, it's an easy avenue. For someone to be critical of the city, uh, and, and frankly, to question why, and sometimes there are good reasons why. But when you're the person that's not getting the, uh, consideration, the crumbling versus what we're here, that makes sense to me.
Fourteen D, Steve, is just specific to the hotel development. Zoning, right?
No.
No?
Correct, no.
Okay.
No, that's, that's, I mean.
Any, okay, I thought was, okay, I see.
Those are the cities that are, that are, that are, that are, that are, and pretty much like we're going to by the time in turn, those versus the flat rate.
I think, yeah, I think different cities do it differently, uh, I know that when we enacted the ordinance in twenty eighteen. I did, uh, reach out and look at different communities, some, some don't do anything, um. Uh, some, uh, do something very similar to what we do. I can't really remember if I, if I saw him, he did like a flat rate, uh, um, yeah. And, you know, I, uh. I would say that. University Heights is an unusual community, it's a very. Uh, it's a very active community, it has citizens that are, that are passionate about, uh. About diligence and, and they've shown that many times, and I'm saying that because, uh. Unlike some other communities, particularly communities of this size in the state at my point. You know, uh, the, the, the proposed developments might not attract the kind of attention and take the kind of time. But the city of University Heights, uh, city council has taken, I think, in the direction of the president, you know, I mean. There, in, 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 in many of the projects that I mentioned in my first article description. There were just multiple, uh, public hearings, and more public hearings, different, different public hearing. You know, uh. That, that, that I just don't think is typical of a lot of cities, particularly the size, and so. I just mentioned that, it's our way of saying, I think, the question is, as I said, I looked, what do other people do? It's only what I got back, but we didn't really have, why would they need, you know, give that money? But a lot of that process, it's time consuming, it gets expensive.
Well, just even in the spirit of being fair, if I wanted to do a ten thousand dollar addition to my yard. Why would I spend a hundred thousand dollars on vacancies to do a ten thousand dollar improvement? It just, it would be ridiculous for anybody to ever want to do anything if they knew they were looking at a hundred thousand dollar. Much of returns needs and engineering fees, like, one, ten thousand dollar day.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to figure out how, how we balance our region, right, tuning, modifying it, that's why I'm asking how other cities handle that.
They pay permits based on you pay a certain percentage of that ten thousand dollars. That's fixed.
That, that's fixed, really committed, and the, and the city, University Heights, have never said, oh, that's not enough. You know, you need to pay, you need to be greater than university, if, when somebody says, well, look, I want to have a seat change. I want to move from a, a R-one zone, for some kind of commercial development, mixed-use development, or, you know, go from house to hotel. I want to move from a R one zone to some kind of commercial development, mixed race development, or, you know, go from house to hotel. Those those, that that's the only time.
You get a zoning issue, that's where it can be.
Yeah, well, I I would agree with that, the thing I think that's unique is what, in this situation, like the nuts and bolts of what practically worked its way out is. Like. You know, like the developer, they said, okay, we want to build this parking lot here at first, and you know. It it was in constant six years, whatever, I don't know, like fifty, sixty thousand dollars, whatever. And then and then, so at the end of the day, the whole thing ended up being, you know, probably fees and there's lots of other deductions and whatever, but like. That one little thing they wanted to do, there was a lot of fees that came up because of that, because of the hotel. The development specific, their little zoning ordinance specific, it says, you couldn't, that were doing. So I think that's the tension is like, well, in this situation, that is what it worked out to be where. Anything that they do want to do could potentially cost them. You know, like if I was, if I was a business owner here and I wanted to do something in my zoning ordinance, said that I can't do that thing. And I wanted to try to maybe see if I could change that, like. There's an unlimited, potentially unlimited number of dollars that could be spent. Based, if given whatever the council kind of feels, you know, at that moment in time, right? If I ask you, Steve, or if if you're the attorney, ask me questions, and you you have bill of ours for that. As you, Lisa does, Steph does, Doug does. Like that, that's the kind of tension with this one that I'm trying to. Like feel out, if I was, if I was them, it it's a little bit worrisome to. You know, for them to want to have, if they want to do something, how much they're gonna cost, right? That that's one, that's the one one piece of it, and then. Um, the other thing is. Um. With the. Hmm, I kind of lost my train of thought. But I think I think the idea is. Is there that, like, the intent, I think, is. We're gonna change this, we're gonna have a lot of work to do this, it's gonna constantly stay on my paradigms, or now the thing develop. It's there, and I went back and looked, I sent an email to John, said, what what is, what is the hotel paid us? You know, hotel motel tax and then property tax revenue. And by the end of this fiscal year, it'll be close to a million dollars. Uh, and and so it's like. I mean, that's amazing, that's incredible, I think, but now I'm at this point, like, well, I don't, I don't really feel like we need to bill them. I don't feel like we need to bill them because they wanted to put in a parking lot, or, like, I think, like, at some point. It just becomes uh overburdened, someone unreasonable. Like expense that we, and especially given that they're, they pay us so much money, you know, and or. The hotels generate so much money for the city, I don't know if I'm getting a good job explaining myself, but. Does anyone else, does that make sense to anyone?
I mean, the rules are the rules, so they pay the hotel motel tax because that's the rules. And these are the rules that everybody else is invited by. Until now, and my feeling is, if they would have hired a lawyer, maybe. An architect or an engineer along the way, maybe they could have approached the whole submission over this summer. With a little more clarity and save the city some time, which would have been their investment. So. With all the changes that were made to make things better for the hotel, why envision that? Then. So it seems like it sends a warning.
Hi, hi. Sorry, but your requests were just cap hazard and, oh, now we want this, now you want to change this, and it's what it is. Excellent, you know, get together, plan what you want to do, you could have even submitted it for. Next foot bosses. And then competing, so I think there's the unfair enforcement aspect of it, the the revenue the hotel generates. That's not what it's intended for, it really has nothing to do with this patient. So. We appreciate it, but they incurred these expenses. And these aren't reasonable expenses.
Then, I mean, that's the goal.
I mean, that's what it, what it said, that's what you said before, I mean.
About forty percent of my regular hours.
Yeah, so, yes, we're not trying to.
When you discuss that history, is there a history that, you know, this was established? And I can see this initially, and I and I know and I understand how it's put in. Has there been any history of other developments here that have, you know, two years down the road? Have asked and been billed, I mean, you know what I mean, he will, I think that's what Bobby was getting at.
The only hesitation I have in answering that is like the two years, I can't tell you the exact timeframe, but yes, that that happened with with O U P. I mean, like, my description of no kind of doing, doing line, the sand got squared up, and then the building permit to build credit against that. That happened, though, here, they asked for different things, considering that. And no one ever used twice. How much it was.
Or could you give me an example of it, or you can't think of it right off the bat, I understand. Okay. So what I think you said that was important, that the council needs to. Adopt a policy that they want to follow and not just make exceptions or. But to, that's your suggestion, a recommendation.
I mean, I could see, you know, if it. And maybe what we need to do is just forget about. Fourteen B or eliminating that idea, because I could see, you know, if there was some other cubes zoning thing that, you know. Was gonna be a change, or it wasn't the hotel, or whatever, I mean, that makes sense, right? You know, somehow the whole coastal block had renovated and gone on in terms of whatever, like, commercial, whatever, you can see that, but. Yeah, for this one, and Tim, to your point, like, it it seems to me the hard part I have is like, I don't know that. I mean, I I know you said that they didn't come with a clear plan, I saw it, it was like, well, they came, they wanted to put a parking lot in, and then. That pretty quickly turned into, okay, we're not, we're not gonna do that, we just want to park cars on game day, was kind of the the thing, it wasn't. Like, we need to spend a ton of money, if I'm them, they just want to park cars seven days a year on the thing, just to come to council and say, what can we do? But what, in my interpretation is, it kind of turned into, I mean, that's that's the nature of University High small town politics, it turns into a big deal, right? And everyone has their opinion, and I mean, that's the, this the positive and the negative of living in a small town like this, it's what we're going to hate, right? But but what happened is, that ended up costing, ended up drawing the process out, which is not, you know, it's it's okay, but. But it just ended up costing the the hotel, you know. But obviously, a good chunk of money, and so, I don't know, that's the, there's there's a tension I'm trying to.
Council Jim raised his hand, is it okay?
Yeah, go ahead, Jim, you you.
Just from my perspective, as as a developer and builder, what we're really trying to do from this point forward. We're not gonna be rezoning, we're, the building is built, we're done. So if I want to go forward and do anything else, like the parking lot, what I like to be able to do is go see the city inspector. Go see the city engineer and. And not figure that I'm gonna incur a whole bunch of costs, I mean, typically, in Tiffin or Iowa City or North Liberty, that's what we'll do, we'll go in and talk to these guys and say, hey, what can we do? And and that's really what what I'm saying right now, we just like to be on the same basis as everybody else. And and not have our our special. Uh agreements that we pay for, we pay for everything, and. So, to me, that just makes sense to. Just straighten out that ordinance and and everybody's on the same basis, because I want to be able to go in and talk to these people and. And. Kind of run run them by me before we do anything. And obviously, we're not gonna be spending thirty million dollars doing something else now, and we're we're to the point where. Any projects that come up are gonna be small things, you know, they're probably, hopefully, not more than fifty or sixty thousand, but but. What if I'm gonna get into costs? Uh, you know, even five, six, ten thousand dollars ahead of time, we we may not do anything. And we do have our own engineers, I mean, we had, we had our engineers design that parking lot, and I appreciate Tim's input on it, a lot of, a lot of your input was really good, and I have all that, and. We're gonna try and adapt that, and so. Um, that's that's my only thing is is. We're up and running now, so anything, anything from this point forward, to me, is should be just normal building permits. And and nor a normal process.
Are there costs in there from the city engineer from those initial discussions?
Oh, I think there are. Let me say a couple of things, uh, one, and I can't speak to the city engineer, but. But I I mean, I've never, you know, said to somebody, okay, if you want to talk about something, you know, the meter run. Uh, it just never worked that way, what I've done, and with the the council and with the board of developers is. You know, when it gets to a point, you know, and I I don't have any magic, it's saying that, when it seems like this is more than just sociable looking. You know, that a that a parking lot is, I think if it were to stay at a parking lot level, I don't know. That that I would have ever decided we were sitting, you know, should we ask this development to reverse? You know, when it starts looking like it's growing from that. I've always said to this, to the city, what do you want me to do, you know, because it's gonna get expensive and then. That they give a budget, so we. Uh, that that's one thing, the the other thing I would point out, uh, and when Bobby said something further about the ordinance. Um, it it is, I think, I think it's important to have this provision in the works, and if the council wants to modify it, and that. Couldn't that put the council through? But I wouldn't, I wouldn't eliminate it, um, I said earlier that, you know, somebody coming to the city might feel kind of awkward, well, these guys are pretty, pretty birds are feet. And there's another way to look at that, uh, you know, more formalistic leeway, which is, somebody says, you know. You know, I mean, I expect to get treated fairly, I'm a citizen, and you know, I want want you to consider this, and I don't mind your pay your fees. Well, it's pretty nice to be able to say, we haven't worked it since we fired. You know, so that that's a further reason, I guess, or upset at the same point, doesn't really apply to the point being made, and I put it in my mind as a reason not to just throw the thing out.
Yeah.
I guess in the future, how do we know that we're, if we don't have the staff? Are we fifty percent higher saved than say Tiffin, like they want to commit to this standard parking lot change? You know, you gotta go through the zoning X, Y, Z, it's gonna cost roughly fifty thousand dollars. If comparable to other cities. But we kind of University Heights, it might be a hundred thousand, because we don't have the staff, you know, that's, are we being comparable? For the services that any uh contractor would want to come in and do that, but we at the same rate, you know, like, should we have a milestone where you say, hey, you're. When you're getting up to a certain dollar amount here, you might want to think about moving forward or stopping, because when you. You you come to a limit here with a a number. And anything above and beyond that, you know, you can't really decide, do you really want to move forward with this, or you're gonna be spending fifty percent more. Because our process is different than compared to say Tiffin and North Liberty, so that makes sense?
I think so, I think it's speed, like down.
Yeah. And like, shouldn't, shouldn't it be like a cap or something, you know, for services running? Fair, you know, fair, um, service cap. Or it's just always going to be, but it's time and period, whatever it is.
Hey, I'm just, just trying to think of a solution, maybe this is, you know, as far as that goes, liquidize it, leave fourteen B as is, whatever. Don't, don't change that, but you just have to decide on it, like, on a case by case basis, whether or not the city has to reimburse me. You know, from whatever it is, without. I I don't, I'm.
Fourteen B's in the zoning change, that was only.
Yeah, right, sorry, right, right. But but the interesting thing is like, this, it's like, because of the unique zoning. Hotel zoning ordinance, it it speaks to so much stuff, it's so kind of, it's so unique on so many different ways, like. You know, it's so like, every word is spelled out there, so if you want to change one thing, it has to do. Even like what would normally be, this is some of a building permit change or whatever, I want to install here, uh, I want to do a parking lot here, I want to do a little lean to here, whatever. Because it's all spelled out so specifically, now they can't, like. It's a zoning change, it's not just a building permit thing, I'm not saying that's bad, I'm saying that's just the way it is. And and so it it did, everything that they want to do, this has the potential to become a huge, huge expense. Because it's all spelled out, right? Does that? Make sense? No, I don't know. I mean, I don't, I don't know practically how they.
I think.
Not everything does.
Oh, yeah, sure.
But yes, you're you're right about the, the. The zoning and the permitting mechanisms that allows this O U P and it allowed the hotel. And you know, they were way different than, should this be a. Multi-family resident zone or a little family, you know. And 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 that's that's why they ended up. But they, you're right, they do exist and they are.
And you said there's two triggers, and one is the zoning change, and the other is the cut agreement, right? So those are the two triggers, apparently.
Right.
Okay, this council, while. We just.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the fourteen B thing goes, I don't know that. I mean, yeah, if it's if it's if it applies to much more than just a hotel, I, you know, I'd agree, I think we can. We can't delete that entirely, because that's essentially broadly, I think, that wouldn't do a lot to do anything. If we see a little future progress, in the form of landlocked.
You always say that, and that's something I, so. Something will get torn down, I don't know.
Do we have to discuss the reimbursement of of the hotel? I mean, specifically, is that?
The second part of this is consideration of motion regarding the amount of reimbursement to see. For nine oh one hotel LLC for professional administrative fees and expenses. And Steve put those, that in his report, rates very nicely, they received that, and so that's. I have it here, but it's like. Like, it's like, uh, there's thirty thousand in attorney fees and there's six. Six and a half thousand in. Sure, engineering fees. Council wanted to consider. Um. Reimbursement. For them.
I'm leaning towards a. Not charging. The reimbursement for the professional administrative fees. Um. On a case by case basis, I think that the hotel has given us quite a bit. You know, with this year specifically too, with hotel motel tax. And everything that they've done for us. Um. I just think it's an awful lot to ask them to expect to pay back these fees. When they've done so much for us in the. Fiscal amount. I don't know what I'm trying to say, but other than, I. I don't think this is the case where I want to charge them. Legal fees. So my motion would be that we would cover those legal fees, or I'm not sure if I'm making the right notion.
We bill them to reimburse the city, right, Steve, so you're saying they, you're questioning that. The nine oh one hotel. Uh, LLC not have to reimburse the city, the professional administrative fees and expenses.
Correct, that's exactly what I'm asking.
Okay, yes. Uh, is there a second?
All second.
Second by Bobby, okay, now this question.
Is that the further thing to do? I mean, with all the order, the agreements in place that I'm hearing, is this the further thing to do? I mean, that's why I was asking about, you know, what is it costing us, is, and, and comparing them, like, well, if it costs this. I think anything above and beyond, you should give them, you know, you should eat that, or reimburse them for that, but I mean, well, if. If the cost of doing business is tax, anything above and beyond that, you should be in X, I think should not be included, you know, does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know how you, I don't know how you got that number.
Yeah, I, I don't, I mean, I mean, I think, I almost feel like it has to be on a case by case basis, I mean, and this one, if, if this, if it was the case where.
You know, who are. The, it was O U P, or whatever, and, you know, right now we're getting five percent of the. Of, of, of property tax collected, so we're not really getting a huge substantial chunk of money, right, to cover the fees, and we had incurred. You know, thirty, forty thousand dollars of, of professional fees. That would say, well, then maybe, yeah, let's look at that, maybe the developer can pay us, because we don't pay, reimburse, they can pay the city, or wherever, you get what I'm saying, because. It's because of the actual thing, this one, this, the hotel is. Paying to the. Greatly, and they've already paid for this development of the, of the conditional zoning and so on and so forth, basically, we're just paying, so. I guess in this case, I'm the same, on this case, this situation, I think, where I'm at, I don't think we're asking it back for it.
From the specific case, I agree.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
And, you know, like. Like Jim said, the likelihood, hopefully, of them having anything major in the future.
Hotel motel tax doesn't exist to cover these. Met to the people, so we have a policy, they have an agreement, that agrees, because. I think there's, again. We look at historical, this is what we've done, we can have somebody come back, and they have to pay these fees, these are reasonable fees. I don't, I don't want to be open to the claim of unfair. Enforcement against, I don't want to have, we would be still looking at, I mean, why do we treat them any differently than the others? The other developments. This is a reasonable fee.
Could be split it? Would that be enough? Would that be a durable key with everyone's power?
Well, then we're using our money to take, to cover it, it's, I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, you, we are using our money, you're not wrong.
But we look out for the interest of the city, and these are, again, reasonable fees.
Yeah, I would also say that the hotel is part of the city too, and, you know. They are one of our fans, they're one of our residents, you know, I feel like. To me, that gives, that's strong incentive to not go in for it, so. Well, it's hard, it's hard, because you can, you can look at it either way, the, the. The interesting thing about it is like, with this one, you know, if you've got, like. Yeah, I don't know, I'm, I'm getting at, it's, it's challenging, because, you know, I, I asked Steve a question, and take an hour or two of his time. And then you do too, and you can do, and that's all part of the process, but it's like, I don't wanna be in a place where I'm hesitant to ask the attorney question. Because it, it's gonna, you know. It's gonna just rack up the, the bills for the, for the, the, the hotel, right? Like, that isn't, to me, that just seems, something doesn't seem right about that, all right, same for you, Lisa, if you're, go ahead. I was just gonna say, yeah, if you, if you ask questions to Steve, and whatever, and Doug does, and Brian does, or whoever, I call Ryan Foley, and same thing, he's got that, he's. Like, I, I just, it just seems like, now I'm hesitant, as a council person, to ask questions. Because I'm worried he's just gonna start racking up bills for them, and so now, it's just a weird dynamic, it's something feel. Like, at this stage, after it's all done, and it's there, and they're paying, I mean, it just doesn't feel right, something feels off about it, and you just, you continue down that. And maybe it's just, we just take it on a case by case basis, and, you know, say whether we wanna target or not. I don't. What's that, that's favoritism. What do you mean? Case by case basis, and those, choose to follow the rules, or wanna follow the rules, then. I guess, what, what I'm saying, this, they, it could be fair in, in, in the same way, like, like, if, like. If Lisa doesn't, doesn't want whatever their hotel's doing, and she has a lot of fees. She can just pause later and talk for an hour, and I'm not accusing her of this, because I don't think she would do this, but like, if any, a council person would. Do that, right, do you see what I'm saying? Like, that's the same difference. And, and I, I just don't wanna, I just don't wanna think, we don't wanna be held a matter of fact to, like, as council people, so I don't know.
I don't see that as the same, like, I just, I don't, but.
Sure.
Steve had said that they wanna come and talk about something, he's not. Picking off the things. He, he did a draft.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's what, there comes a point where I say to the council, hey, but this, like, it's getting bigger, then maybe we'll get first, I mean. You know. Should we inform developers that we respect, that it keeps me reimbursed and.
What is the total amount of fees? Do we have a total yet?
Yeah, it's, it's thirty seven, six, four, and sixty three.
My motion still stands, yeah, I was just gonna say, a motion on the table is that, uh.
You know, I mean, you're.
The city will, uh, not ask the hotel, nine oh one hotel to reimburse for these expenses.
Can, can I read out, can I read out what I think we, we got to, okay, yeah, yeah. Motion by Gunn, second by Scott, to exempt nine oh one, oh, nine oh one hotel LLC for professional administrative fees and expenses. Related to requested changes to city ordinances and regulations in twenty twenty three for hotel matters.
Yes. And so what's on the table is kind of stuff.
You both have skin in the game. I mean, if we're purely gonna be a partner, you know, playing good neighbor, I, I think it's a gesture, but, you know, I, I understand that. In the same rules, the rules, and, and, you know, you make concessions, one, how do you make concessions for all? That's just kind of a sticking point for me, that I'm hung up on. So, I'm trying to find out in my head what, what's fair and equitable, and in the future, or, you know, we split with fifty, fifty, or thirty, but that, right? So, I wanna be consistent as well, that's, that's where I'm from, though.
And I've heard Bobby and Stephanie say case by case, right? Everything the same, so that's where you are, so.
That's really good.
Let's see how you justify it, I mean, it's two buckets of money. It, there's a lot being made by the city, by the hotel motel tax, as a sign of the hotel's doing. And we shouldn't confuse that, I'm trying to figure out a good metaphor for it, I can't think of it, okay, we shouldn't. Have that cloud our vision for one of the expenses the city's taken on over the summer, because of. I mean, it was not just one. Part of the U D was changed, it was many, and it could have been. And then, could have been a cleaner process, perhaps if that parking lot wasn't proposed at the front, at the beginning, then. That stirred up a lot of controversy, and it, we would have just started with the other issues. Step back and took a little thought before, is going right into it, I think the whole thing, but if they were not cleaning. Because it wasn't called out, there was more expense by the city, and it could be paid for. And it's making their money up.
And all of these changes are to benefit.
So, okay, Michelle, still, no one stepped on. Thank you.
So, I don't know, um, a hundred percent of the situation, so if I'm saying something, please correct me. But for us, now I gotta try to keep my thoughts clear, um, for us, because, um, of what we're trying to do. We, as a business, are providing you this free budget that you now have. In order to do more and benefit the city, and I think all's we're kind of asking is that. These things do get waived this time, or covered by the budget, because to us, it almost feels like it, like, I don't wanna say double billing. But it, it, it just, it feels that way when it feels like most things are covered under. The blanket of a budget, and so much of this budget we provide to you, and I think what we're just sort of asking for is that. These things be waived because of the monies that we contribute to the city, and we know a lot of this stuff was set up originally. When, um, we didn't know what was going to come in, what kind of fees were gonna be able to be collected by the city. What kind of budgets you guys were gonna be able to have, and of, of course, we are here for the city, and to generate money for the city. But, uh, this is one of those things that we're just asking, when can the city give us something back? We didn't take any tip money, we didn't ask for tip money, you know, we built this out of our pockets, and we're here supporting the city in every way. And it's just kind of asking for the support, the support to work both ways from the city. Yeah, we are asking for some special lenience on this, but yet, not everybody. I mean, everybody, like, business-wise, they're paying taxes, but are they paying also, you know, a hotel motel besides a property tax, right? Are these extra fees assessed to everybody? They're not, it's pretty much us, we are kind of the unique individual here. And we bring this city a lot of revenue, and by us trying to improve ourselves constantly. That helps generate more revenue for the city, so we're just trying to ask for a little, you know. Give back, okay, so.
Oh, you wanted to say something, I, so, I do wanna make clear about, I think I really do, but, you know, I. I, I wrote to the developers on. July nine, copy the council, and said, blah, 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 finally, never in the past, but through the existing signed agreements. And the zoning orders, city will require the hotel, LLC to reimburse it. So, that, and I, so, I sent that, they were told that, that we signed it on the ninth of July. And then I reported that in July, we were before, um, so I, I just. It's important to me that the city is clear with, uh, with people that's happy, evidently, as early as possible, and that's why I thought.
Any other questions for Steve? Okay, there's, you have a motion, and second on the table is, no, we're ready to vote?
I'm not. Yeah, I'm still hung up on this, so. I know, it, it looks like a special exemption, it is, if it's not, and I think, in all fairness, I think. I think we all can be walking, and looking very rude on this, and we all got murdered from this process. So, the next one will be a little clearer, a little more concise, but I, I don't know how much this, that we artificially, you know. You're not having staff inflated the price for them by not having staff, I mean. Are we, did we cause the legal fees to be higher than perceived north, that, that's where I'm. You know, again, it goes back with what we tipped, and so, I'm trying, I'm just trying to be consistent, but I'm also wanting to follow, uh, what Steve is saying, to be consistent, so. I'm just wondering, how much this, should we be licking our wings on, on, as well, and our game, as well, I play on the talent, just. How much of that could we incur on them, you know, just. Not getting our ducks in a row, or they're not having their ducks in a row, obviously, it sounded like, so, I, I think we both, I, in my opinion, I think we both should. Take a bite of that crap sandwich, and fight another day.
Then would you support a fifty fifty?
Something.
Yeah, it's better than. They're paying the whole thing, but, um.
Just wish there was more of a branch now for it, so it can be explained to the next people. Well, in my mind, it, it's clear, in my mind, it's clear, you know. There are great benefits, you see. But then, I don't wanna, they gotta pay those, it's, it's not an option that they pay the hotel motel tax, it's. It's, they're not doing that, that out of Jen's, neutral to the marks. Well.
I, I agree. But it does provide a budget.
But it, but it does provide, it does require a lot of risk, to do that too, and it's not like if they, but at another hotel, they would think, of course. But they'd have to do it, I mean, you know.
But we do contribute to the C V B, and that is a lot. Right? It's not like we're not giving anything back.
Well.
And. Who pays the hotel motel tax? Isn't that added on to your guest bill? The guests are paying the hotel motel, and that is covered, is that correct?
Guest paid the state, guest paid the hotel, hotel paid the state, state paid the city.
So, I hear they're saying it's not written above, so.
On some kind of a split, thirty four, fifteen, fifteen, that's, to be, and then to be consistent with the, the, the. Bylaws and, and everything that's on the books, to be consistent. You know, I, I, I feel like my hands are tied, so, as much as I want it, I wish I could say, yeah, we won't need to take care of it, but. To be consistent with what are on the list now. I mean, it would be a good faith gesture on our behalf if we offered this, but by the law, I think our, our hands are tied. But I just think it would be a kind of thing to do, and show, I mean, that we are a good neighbor slash, you know, skin of the game partner here. So, that's just my opinion, but.
Well, with our council voting, I think I can say it's two to, say, maybe we wanted to defer this till November. I mean, I mean, unless you want to get, call the vote, and. I mean.
Splitting the, the policy, or any, throw hands for splitting?
I mean, if, if we can't leave it all, I, I, I would do splitting in a heartbeat.
Yeah, and I, I, I do that, I do.
To me, and the devil's favor to them, still, and we're not gonna be consistent, we're not gonna be consistent, we have a policy.
I would de-credit it and back what was left on that, uh, it was a building permit with interest basis.
Okay, here's a little thirteen hundred.
So, I mean, it, it, it is a paper, then, I mean, they're paying us over a million dollars every two years. That's. Well, I know, I, I agree, I know what you're saying, but I'm saying, but, that's, you know what I'm saying, like, that's, to me, that's a neat benefit for the city, and I think it's okay to. I don't, I don't, I don't feel like we're. Um, I don't have, I'm so guilty for saying that, I guess, I mean. Would love to have a reason to give it to them, so. Would love to have a reason to give it to them, so we can follow our rules.
Well, I I think, you know, I mean, we're kind of going around the same. I we 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 put all this in place because we wanted to prevent something that we didn't want. And now they're there and it's great. And they asked us for this thing and people are on board and said, sure, let's do it. And. That's, that's, to me, that's. I I I, okay, can we kind of say, let's do half, what what's the, instead of all of it, let's do half, and then although.
Okay, now we have to withdraw.
We'll withdraw, I'm going to withdraw that.
Yeah, withdraw my motion. And then the second was. I'll re-submit a new motion. Oh, does anybody object to with this report? That's right, we haven't done that in a while. Nobody objects. Okay, so the motion has been drawn, so. We're ready for another motion. Right, this, I would like to re-motion that we. Why don't we have Mike read it?
Motion by GON to. Require. Hotel nine oh one hotel LLC to pay fifty percent.
Reimburse the city.
To reimburse the city fifty percent. For professional administrative fees and expenses related to requested changes to city ordinances and regulations in twenty twenty three for hotel matters.
Thank you, so that's a motion, right, yeah, and is there a second?
Can we add to that saying, given the magnitude of the hotel motel tax income?
Of course, you can add to it.
So is some justification for sure this type to it, but doesn't apply to everybody?
Do you have that, Mike?
I'm getting it.
Maybe we can re-read that.
Yeah, I will.
Is there any objection to adding? What Tim Schroder?
No.
Okay, go ahead, and then. Mike's gonna read it to make sure.
It's writing it all out before I read it, because my computer is occupied.
I write everything.
Reimburse. Okay. Motion by GON, second by Scott, that in light of the hotel motel tax paid by Hotel nine oh one LLC. That paid by Hotel nine oh one LLC will be required to reimburse the city fifty percent. Of professional administrative fees and expenses related to requested changes to city ordinances and regulations in twenty twenty three for hotel matters.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, we're ready for roll call motion, I think.
More. Schroder.
Yes.
Scott.
Yeah, fine.
Swales.
Hi.
GON.
Hi.
Motion carries four one.
Thank you. Uh, we'll go on to legal report, and I think you've kind of covered it already, does anybody have any questions for Steve? And so, okay, we'll go on to that first report. Does Mike, do you have?
Right.
A resolution for Civic Plus?
Yes, Civic Plus has been our web host for, I'm looking at Lisa right now, five, six, seven years? Okay. And as such, they take care of a lot of the administrative features that we used to do ourselves and it's. They um are asking for. A renewal this year with about a thousand dollar increase in what it had been from fifty five hundred to roughly fifty to sixty five hundred. Um, this allows us to be able to not have to worry about denial, disservice attacks and all the other things that. A lot of the security in a website. Need. They also have a bunch of new cool features they told us in this rollout, but I, once I told them we're a town of twelve hundred and you know what? We don't need many of those, they're like, okay, well, but that is, that is. We wanted to make sure that. Council was aware of that rather than just putting that in as another warrant, that this is a bigger increase, they do not intend to have annual thousand dollar increases. So. And they've given us good service, they really have. When we start licensing our own dogs, it'll all be right there on the webpage, so. This budget year, because it'll start in December, that that our our contract with them runs to December to December. So that we'll pay that one within this current budget. Yeah. Yeah.
So resolution number twenty three thirty seven. On the right being uh a renewal of the city website contract with Civic Plus, before he was there, a motion? Motion by Lee, is there a second? Second by Bobby, sorry. Um, discussion. Roll call vote.
Schroder.
Fine.
Scott.
Fine.
Swales. GON.
Hi.
More. Carried five zero. I really don't, um.
Finish with the uh.
Got a few.
Rental permits.
Not quite, we've got a few landlords I'm still tracking down. So Brian Jensen and I have remarked, it's been kind of a funky year for that. So. But we are, we are. We are still on track.
Thank you, okay, we have any other questions for Mike? Okay, we'll move on to city pressure, John. Uh, I know you. Uh, sent out the warrants. Early.
Yeah, early, they, normal, they're only have, they're still not timely, I need to get them sooner than. Uh, than they uh, I agree. And with that, I've got uh. Three items to add to the warrants. Uh, and two Kelsey. Uh, one he got, he's got the other two in it. I know from the email, uh, one is for Caltech, it's just servicing one of the. Um, battery for one of the police vehicles is two hundred and thirty two dollars eighty eight cents. Another one is IT service call uh. For the police to set up a VPN. Um, virtual private network for anybody, that's, it's a hundred and fifty dollars. And um then to Lexi Paul. Is four thousand four hundred and seventy five dollars at fifty nine cents, this is for the police's uh. Policy manuals or training bulletins, all the updates. And what have you, that was. Be the three items to add to the warrants. Plus to highlight um. The item on there. From Deluxe for High Security Laser Checks. That's. Five hundred and two dollars and ninety nine cents, that's what that is, I need more checks. So I'm not ordering lasers. I've actually ordered checks.
Okay, I wanted to point out that I have a League of Cities bill.
Right, it's a.
It's for a conference. That I attended.
It should be on there. Yeah, two hundred and eighty bucks, yes.
I just wanted to explain.
Oh, by that, okay, okay.
These are very nice, thank you, but I wanted to explain to council uh. The League of Cities had their state meeting, luckily in Cedar Rapids. And so I attended, I have been uh serving on the executive board for the League of Cities for mayors. For the last two years. And I, I didn't have to attend October. And it was really great to be part of that, even though it was a monthly meeting and, but we ended up on Zoom all the time and. There were seven. Quadrants from the state and so there are seven mayors that. Are on the executive board, and this is fairly new because the state of Iowa doesn't have. Didn't have mayor's meetings. They just didn't get the mayors together, and I feel really fortunate to be part of it. Because I made a lot of connections and I thought it was important that I attend this. State conference and um. So anyway, and also made good connections with the League of Cities. And, you know, they responded my phone calls a little quicker maybe. So that's two hundred and eighty dollars, but. I think it was a really good thing and I didn't ask ahead of time, it just kind of came up on me. And so I just wanted you to know that. That's on the bill too, and then of course, the eleven thousand plus for payment markings. That Brian talked about is there.
Right.
So. Are there any uh? Uh, objections to pay in the warrants as listed by John? And on the warrants list? Hearing none, the warrants will be paid by unanimous consent. Thank you, John. Um, then we'll go down to. Uh, police chief report, you had. A nice report.
Yeah, just.
For its chief.
Thank you, I'd just like to touch on, you know, like four items uh. Item two. See, uh, I was just notified this past week that the summit is again scheduled, the Iowa Summit on Justice and Disparity, Justice and Disparities. Uh, this is co-sponsored by the N double A C P, the city. Has sponsored this at least every year since I've been here, so beginning in twenty nineteen with a five hundred dollar sponsorship. The N double A C P contacted me and want to ask if I'd be able to attend again, and also. Asked if the city would be willing to do that same sponsorship, and they just contacted me this past week. I think that it's important, I will be attending regardless, but I think that it's important, I would ask council to consider that.
Okay, let's have council uh make a motion on, on. And they're voted by staff, and that had by duck, I need discussion. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carry.
Item G, I did not highlight earlier, but I worked with City Inspector Brian Jensen on some issues that were brought to my attention. After the first football games and that I frankly noticed, and Brian. Did some very good follow up with residents, you know, he did his reports uh to clear up those issues. Uh, item J, I met with councillor GON as I tried to do, I always get done and. Following the last meeting, which I wasn't able to attend, and she relayed some of the discussion and concerns about the courtyard by. Marriott and the expanded parking and potential public safety issues related to tailgating. Uh, she directed me to do an assessment uh to see what I thought about access. I waited until the first home football game, because I thought it would generate larger crowds, it also happened to be a very nice state, efficient save game. I went down and did a drive around, it's anyways, all my report, but there were no issues that I saw. That were vehicle related and the people issues, they moved out of my way. I waited until after the game started, pretty much immediately after the game started, had a fire crew come down. Because I wanted them not to have to. Push people out of the way, but to see it, look at act, it's the parking lot and drive through. With the vehicles that were still parked there for the game. They drove around, they pointed out in one particular spot where it happened, that two pickups were kind of a back and forth, it's it's tight there, but we can still get through. Uh, they had no concerns and something that I hadn't even asked them to assess, they're like, actually, this is a very good parking lot because. It doesn't matter where on the structure, there's an emergency, we can go around both ways and by that man. In that counter clockwise and clockwise. And get multiple vehicles at any one point to attack an issue, so. Uh, I created a health service to log that, and I wanted to make sure I reported that back, and I was asked to do it. It also happened at this last game, there was. A medical emergency, a medical health service that went out. And again, uh, we were able to access and provide the treatment and transportation that needed to do. And then finally, I'd like to point out, item L. Uh, was contacted uh. On behalf of Stephen and and he. Stephen has offered a murder one and a two. Uh, this getting predicted at the police department for the golf cart. Uh, football games, and we, we don't park our vehicles here, we park them at another location, but transporting transfer, transporting officers around. I think that we use it more than just the home games, but I think that was kind of the primary driving force of that. I've had conversations regarding that, my concerns initially were storage. Equipping, storage of the vehicle, equipping the vehicle, and then the city would incur fuel and insurance costs. You know, the fuel costs, we wouldn't be driving patrol cars if we were driving. That vehicle on that particular day, so that's actually a wash. Storage, Officer Akers and I assessed our storage unit. The garage in the apartment complex immediately south of courtyard by Marriott and. We can reconfigure how we have our evidence storage in there, so we won't need to pay for an additional storage space or arrange for an outside storage. Uh, we can use that space on cop, and we can, and equipping, as I understand it, part of, part of this donation would be. Uh, taking the six person passenger or the six person golf cart. Pulling the body off of a painting that we land. Uh, so that if we wanted to apply the cows or have a raft at some future time, we could. And then also equipping it with with. Tire suspension such that we could drive over curbs at whatever location we really get to, and we weren't limited by having to stay in the street. That should also allow us to drive it later into the season, even if there is snow on the ground for some of those late, late games. So I I have really very few concerns about it, I think it will be a nice addition. We will not use it on a daily basis, but there will be at least seven times a year and. And frankly, many other times that we can use it too, such as the, the event that I did with Sidekick, and we brought out our emergency vehicles and did a show and tell. So I was excited about that, this is something that I, kind of I'm passing on to. Sergeant Tucker, and I believe he's going to pull in Officer Jav and then as far as. Making that an apartment vehicle, and they will get no use of it in the future than I will. That's my report, if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Are we getting any noise complaints from uh over by birthday there in the parking lot now? I noticed the last couple of home games we had, and I've never heard the sound before, clear down the ride of um. I could hear that parking lot up there, I could hear a lot of tailgating going on.
Yeah.
I heard a birthday complaint.
I have not handled in my work the games, I missed one that I, I have not handled in this uh, in dispatch me. And I am not aware of any, we did have more noise complaints I noticed on this report that I did, I could go back and review those, you know, but not that I'm aware of.
Just thought it was interesting, I'd never heard that before, and then I got to think, where does that come from, and then I realized.
It is, it is. Also probable that if there were complaints, I would be unaware of it, uh, football traffic. Operates on different frequencies to different agencies, and that is not our jurisdiction. So it might not go, it might not be dispatched to the University of Iowa Police or Iowa City Police. On a frequency that I would be aware of, but I can, but I can research it, just just curious.
I want to thank you, Chief, you and your officers for helping with the farmer's market. And, you know, we completed the season September twenty sixth, as you wrote, and it just wouldn't be half the market without community base there. Everybody loves you, even the vendors love you, and they're always handing you a cookie. And, you know, it just makes things so nice. You know, and and a good representation of our community to others that come in, so I, thank you, so be sure to tell the officers, thank you.
I will, I'll I'll pass that along, thank you.
Thank you. And uh, so then we'll go down. To finance, and I know Bobby. There's going to be some finance next month with Steve Cool here. So, um. We'll, we'll go down to building zoning and sanitation, do we have anything today? Okay. Okay, thank you, and E-Govern. Uh, you sent around a report, and my favorite part was if Halloween treats mysteriously disappear before eight o'clock, turn your light off. I don't know how old they come, how they just disappear mysteriously. That was nice. Any questions for Lisa with her report?
I just wanted to point out under notification, because residents who are a little concerned about subscribing to anything that that, the notifications are generated through the website, I'm not doing a news letter or using their email address. Um, their information is not published, shared, or used for anything else, and they can, I mean, subscribe and sign up.
Thanks for that clarification. Um, are there any announcements? Uh, is there any objection to it, hearing none, hearing none, we need to learn by November, so, thank you, everyone.